And this meeting is hereby called to order. We have the presence of a quorum and the meeting has been duly called and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. First up are information items, um, the capacity audit update. Dr. Dupree?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Oscar Perez to kind of introduce this topic. As you know, when the board approved the different aspects of the facility's master plan back in June, we, you also asked us to conduct an audit of capacities of our building. So that work has been completed and Oscar is ready to tell us about it tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. So what, this evening, we will provide you with the findings of the capacity audit conducted by PPK. Additionally, we will provide background information and insight regarding the process, the approach used to conduct the, the district-wide audit, uh, and also include an overview of the past methodologies. So it's important to note that this, this audit was not to come in and look at new methodologies, but actually look at the methodology that had been used, the numbers that were in question, and then audit that to see how those numbers look in, in relation to the actual, uh, way the buildings were being utilized. So, the way this began, it began with a detailed review of the existing room-by-room inventory for all the spaces in each one of the classrooms. And then those were compared to the existing floor plans for each campus to go ahead and ensure alignment, uh, and accuracy in the accounting of the spaces. Uh, in addition, PPK met with individual principals and had their floor plan in front of them and went over how the building was being utilized in seventeen eighteen. So this is an audit of seventeen eighteen. How was it utilized this past school year? And so they literally went, you know, room by room on the plan and said, okay, how did you utilize this? Got all that information and then with that information, they came up with their audit findings, which Todd will present here shortly. The one thing that's important to note is that with his audit findings, it does not change the course of our current planning. So even though there were discrepancies that were found, uh, just for example, at Commonwealth, there's still a twelve classroom addition that's needed there. Uh, we have gone ahead and included, uh, money for a core expansion if that's needed, but we literally, what we need to do with that is we need to go ahead and get an architect, you know, onboard and then we will, you know, look at it and, and make that determination if it's truly needed or not, but we have that budgeted, uh, just in case. But to arbitrarily just say at this moment, yes, it definitely is needed, you know, that, that would not be prudent. We need to really, you know, take a look at the space and, uh, the way it's being utilized now. So with that said, I will turn it over to Todd.
Thank you, Oscar. Uh, good evening. Can everybody hear me okay? And so as Oscar stated, uh, we did do, um, the conducted capacity audit, uh, based on the two thousand thirteen numbers, um, well, I guess I should say the methodology and that program, that spreadsheet that was given to us, uh, here just a few months ago, uh, to look at and see where they changed and how they compared. And so we'll kind of just get right down to that. Uh, some of the things Oscar said, uh, were spot on in how we, um, went about our duties. And so I'll kind of get right into the nut of what we found, uh, during our course of us looking at each campus and how they're being used, as well as the kind of spaces that were shown there. As we said earlier, the methodologies have pretty much stayed the same, but they were, uh, back in two thousand thirteen changed from a design capacity to a functional. Uh, and so with some of that, as we looked into the spreadsheets or the data that we used, that we were given, we did find some unidentified spaces. In other words, folks that were trying to keep up with the types of spaces that were not being used, whether they were pullout, whether they were special ed or whatnot, were missing from the original, uh, spreadsheet. So we were able to recapture those, assign those back into the database, uh, put them in the more permanent situation where we could count them on a design, as well as associate what their functional, uh, intentions were. Non-academic rooms under three hundred square feet, there were not a bunch, but there were quite a few here and there. Uh, just spaces that had been repurposed, they were, used to be a store room and now somebody called them a pullout room of some sort, but they were, they littered some of this information in the database and we cleaned some of that up. If it was under four hundred square foot, five hundred square foot was not being associated with, uh, special ed or pullout programs, uh, we took it out of that inventory to clean that, those spaces up if they were too small to use. Um, another inconsistency was just the way the original database showed some of these spaces. I used the, uh, example here in the gyms. When we first got into this database, we started looking at it, some gyms were counted at sixty, some were at forty-five, some were at fifteen. The competition versus the practice, there was just differences in there. So we cleaned that up. We looked at how we, uh, it looked like they intended it originally and tried to stay with that same common theme every time we found an inconsistency. Um, some other things were, uh, the way they, they ranged and, and, um, uh, set a capacity for certain sized rooms. Um, what, one good thing this audit, what this spreadsheet really did allow us to do or allow you to do is look at the size of that room compared to how many square foot a kid, per kid TA says and be able to right-size some of these spaces. All, not all rooms are the same, not all classes are the same. So we tried to go in and make that more consistent and use some fundamental understanding of TA minimum standards to right-size that, at least get every school as it counted the same. And we saw vast differences from one school to the next on how that was done when we got into it. Other variances due to actual room size, um, as, as you get into the database, again, very detailed, tells you exactly how much square foot each room is. It tells you what the programmed, um, room, that space was trying to accommodate. And there was a comparison of percentage. And so when they, when they use that, sometimes to the, to the undervalue of, of that space, I'll use an example of, of an industrial consumer lab. The existing square foot was like an eighteen hundred square foot lab, but for whatever reason, the program listed there was over five thousand square feet. So when you take the twenty-five kids that would normally occupy an eighteen hundred square foot lab, but the factor of that program said only six kids could fit in that room. Well, we right-sized that and said, that's not true. We can get the twenty-five that would normally be in a normal classroom into that. So a lot of, a few of the situations we found from campus to campus had a situation like that. Um, also bigger, uh, multi-use rooms, um, there was just differences in labels. There's quite a few, um, prototypes campuses that you have. Um, and there's, so they're very cookie cutter, they're very similar in plan, but the way they were designed or where they were laid out with the room names, one room was, uh, two rooms had a divider, a fo- a folding partition. Well, on one plan, it only had one room number on it. The other plan had two room numbers on it. Uh, the same, uh, same with an Austin Parkway, there was a huge, huge room in that particular plan. Well, in some cases, it had two room names, um, numbers in it and sometimes it didn't. So therefore, when it got into the Excel database, um, those were being counted different. And that, we've actually found that out after, um, sitting down and reviewing the initial, um, uh, capacity audit with the steering committee or the committee last week and, and really challenged us on some of these common plans. And I took it to task and we really went down and, and took the common plans, not just the ones that they talked about, but every one that you have in your district and really tried to sit down and really re-audit that to make sure that we had those correct. And so those are, constitute some of the, um, differences. Um, in some cases, the elementaries, uh, when we, we didn't count art, we didn't count science, we didn't count music. Well, when you looked at some of the old versions, sometimes that art room used to be a classroom, now it's an art room, so it was counted in the, in the Excel. So again, we tried to clean that stuff up, um, so that at the end of the day, we had the accurate counts of those rooms. And by looking at the spreadsheet and auditing it back to the, uh, floor plans and then meeting with the principals and understanding not if that classroom was a English classroom or a math classroom, but understanding if that classroom is that classroom that they schedule, uh, seven periods a day, every day of the week, made a difference to us. We tried to capture those rooms that weren't in the mainstream of being a scheduled class, finding those pullouts, finding those special ed rooms, whatever the case may be, to help with the right-size, the functional side of this, uh, audit. Um, as an example, you've got the, um, the handout, I think, in front of you that tells you, uh, basically our complete audit. Kind of maybe just take two seconds to explain, um, that one's in green is basically the information that we were auditing to. The information the district originally had thought out and was, uh, wanting to make sure it was correct. The column C is our updated design capacity. That means, doesn't count, um, functional, doesn't count how you're using that space. It's truly what, however many rooms, however many seats can be in that room. That's helped us understand the design capacity. And then the functional capacity, column F, is what was completed after we talked with the principals, understanding not only pullout rooms, but special ed rooms, special program rooms, anything that can't and did not count as a full day in class. At the end of the day, um, what our recommendations are that we're suggesting that you, that you consider is maintaining this particular audit that we did, um, moving forward, but more importantly, really looking at the functional capacity annually, um, to, uh, update that every year from a functional standpoint. Your design capacity should never change from year to year, uh, unless you do an addition, unless you do some major remodeling inside where you're combining or, or doing some kind of a change to that floor plan, um, those numbers shouldn't change. I would like to kind of revisit that and do, and we'll tell you that. We did add a scheduling factor to all of these. As we looked at what we were doing in the past, it was a little bit in different spots. Some schools had a seventy-five percent scheduling factor, some had a ninety-five. We, we chose basically the seven out of, or six out of seven periods, using eighty-five percent to at least right-size from a scheduling standpoint to, to allow for a planning period, uh, per se, uh, as well as just some logistics, uh, to move around at the elementary side of things. So that at least kind of puts it in perspective, uh, even the design capacity does have that associated with it. And then at the end of the day, just keeping up with the, um, taking, we have a new ed spec out there being finalized. So at the end of the day, actually going back into this database and right-sizing the programs with the capacities that come along with your new ed spec would be a recommendation of ours, um, moving forward. So with that, I think I'll open it up to some questions and...
Thank you, sir, for that presentation. Do we have any questions, uh, Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. Uh, Mr. Spoor, I wanted to just verify a couple of things. You said that you visited with every principal from each one of our schools to, and had a floor plan laid out and kind of went over it. So you understood how they were using it in this last school year, right?
Yes, sir. I think there was about three or four of them that didn't make it that day that we did follow back up with phone calls and they, they were looking at a plan when we were talking with them.
So, uh, at the end of the day, you feel like you, you've done a, a fair job of vetting that information to use in this database?
Yes, sir.
Now, uh, tell me, I'm looking at the slide that has the updated design, the functional capacity. Could you back up to that? That, that's the slide. So, uh, am I to understand that column F, is that the current functional capacity? Is, are you saying that's what?
That is correct.
What, in this case, Armstrong Elementary School is really able to accommodate seven hundred and forty kids?
That is correct. For the, for the functional capacity, how they're using that facility to date as of last year. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. And, and how, what is the difference between that and the design capacity?
Well, design capacity, so functional took into account that some of the special ed rooms only had twelve count instead of the twenty-two. Um, they also took into account that they were resource rooms at zero, um, because of, of being able to have some pullout spaces. Whereas the design capacity said those same rooms, it's a count, it's a space that kids can sit and be taught. And so that's, hopefully that helps you understand the difference between what we are considering design.
Yeah.
And a true, not a, a true design, because we still put the scheduling factor on the design just to allow some flexibility there. So I do want to clarify that and make sure you understand that.
All right. So going forward, we can use the, the twenty seventeen, eighteen functional capacity as a basis for going forward with our planning. Very well. Thank you.
As long as that's a, yes, sir. As long as that's updated every year, that's great.
Yeah, right. It's gonna change every year.
Because that change, that's the one number that will change on you every year.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Uh, Ms. Rosenthal.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Spoor. That's a very good explanation of, you've answered some of my questions, but, um, one of the question is you use an example of a lab and you said originally it was said, somewhere this spec said it, it needed five thousand square feet. Where did that spec come from?
Well, that was originally your original, um, ed spec, I'm assuming. Uh, I'm, I, the fact that that was so large, that didn't happen but on a few high schools. Uh, but when I saw that anomaly, I assumed that they were saying that that program, probably including the storage and the office and all other spaces, were counting the five thousand. But it was hurting the count for that campus because it was being held accountable, that one room, for the whole program square foot, if that makes sense. That wasn't a widespread issue, but we did find that specific example on a few of the high schools.
So they were saying basically that that program required five thousand?
Yes. And because that room was only eighteen hundred, it took twenty-five, I don't remember the exact, uh, uh, comparison, um, factor, but let's say it was twenty percent or twenty-four percent. So it took a room that could handle twenty-five very easily and said only eight or nine or whatever it was, substantially lower.
Right.
And so we reloaded that at twenty-five in this case.
So what were the, were there any, as far as, you know, individual schools, were there, were there any major changes? Or anything that may have surprised you or, or anybody else that was involved with this?
Well, I don't know that I, how I could categorize major, but I will say there was a few campuses that were, that had a lot of missing, um, spaces in them, that, quite a few. Not every one of them, but there was a few that were overly missing areas that, that definitely made an impact on the numbers you were seeing before to the numbers today. Other than that, it's really comes down to one-offs here and there, just trying to get the thing consistent. And if we said that this room and this space was gonna be counted this way at this campus, I wanted to be consistent throughout all the campuses. So sometimes that changed the number from, from twenty-two to twenty, or from twenty-one to twenty-two, from eighteen to twenty, um, to, to be able to, to right-size that.
Okay. Would you say in general that the functional capacity actually increased as a result of this audit? Because that's what it looks like on the examples here.
Well, across the board, ex- from front campus, it, some increased, some decreased. When you look at the, when you look at the very bottom number, your functional capacity actually decreased.
Okay.
Um, from your original capacity numbers that you were running with, whereas your design capacity increased. Does that make sense?
Hmm, okay.
Which is very, that's kind of understandable, right? Because design capacity says, if, boy, if a, if we can put a seat there based on the square footage, we're counting it. That's the design capacity. So that went up, um, but your functional actually kind of went down based on how you're using those facilities.
Okay. So, uh, were you able to get an idea on, um, the, uh, trailers that are being used and, you know, why they're being used or if they're necessary maybe, or they're not necessary at, at some places, or were those numbers included?
No, we did not include temporary buildings, if that's what you're saying. So that can be a very easy study based on this baseline that we've set now to be able to go back and really understand that. Yes, sir.
I think that would be a good thing to look at, so.
You bet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mrs. Tossan.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. Thank you, Mr. Spoor. I have a couple of follow-up questions. So I noticed that, um, one of the things that was omitted were the common areas such as hallways, uh, the cafeterias, those types of areas. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So let me ask, how do we account for those areas and do we know what those capacities are? Because a lot of the feedback that we get from people, parents and students who attend some of these schools, is that it feels like they're busting at the seams even though we may not be at capacity. So how do we account for the, the capacity of the common areas and whether or not, even though we may have the functional capacity and for the academic spaces, um, we may not have the capacity within the common areas?
Okay. Well, let me try to say it this way. We, we were charged to, to not really redo the original audit or the original capacity numbers. We used that as a baseline for us to understand. So they did not count those spaces in the original capacity. So we, we chose not to do that any different than what was originally designed. When it comes to core capacity, because I think, I think I understand your question, but I'm trying to maybe answer a couple that might be a follow-up to that. The, the capacity, the core capacity of these, we did look at, we didn't look at the admins yet in the libraries. We've done some extra studies on the libraries through our facility stuff. So we felt pretty good where we, where we know, where we know we, where those need some help. But cafeterias in my mind were a big component to whether or not we're gonna add a twelve-pack to this building or a ten-pack to that building and how will that affect us being able to feed the kids? So we did do that quick audit and we've included that in our numbers, at least as a baseline of understanding. And from a middle school and high school, for the most part, we did the square foot of the commons, the cafeteria, I'll just say it that way, divided by fifteen square foot a person. That'll give you enough room for tables and chairs in that kind of setting. And then use that as, that's, that's, particular dining room can handle X number of kids for one lunch period. Then from a middle school and high school standpoint, we just times it by three to get a baseline understanding of three is a common, pretty well-known, um, number of, of, uh, lunch periods to use or start out with. And then we looked at that, out of the list of all of the middle schools and high schools, because the elementary does a little different, so I'll talk about that in just a second. It was Austin and, um, oh, I don't remember. Uh, sorry, it's Austin High School and Clements High Schools were the only ones that had to go to five, out of the hi- high schools and middle schools, that needed to go to five lunch periods. Everybody else could handle it either in the three that they, we were originally giving them or four lunch periods. And so that, that, for that side of things, we felt pretty good about, at least for the most part, except for Austin and, and Clements High School, from your capacity of, the size of your, your dining rooms can handle the kind of capacities that are being asked for them to do. At the elementaries, it became a little bit more challenging, because as we went through this process, we found out that they, for the most part, most of the elementaries, they do six lunch periods. They, it's per grade level. And so we have the same capacity understanding of what each classroom, or excuse me, dining room can handle at the elementaries. We're just, um, we need to kind of know if we truly want to look at that capacity that way, then we need a little bit more information on how many fifth graders do you have versus how many second graders you have to make sure that top end lines out. But for the most part, we could even look, we've even looked at it from a three lunch period, understanding if you go to four. We've done that as well from both, both, uh, aspects when it comes to the elementaries.
Okay. So thank you for that explanation. That does help. So my question now is for Mr. Perez, that when we're planning, um, for this bond or for additions, or when we're looking at capacities, um, you know, as we've, as we've done some of this planning, are we really looking hard at those numbers and taking those into consideration? Because I know we're, we just moved five new temporary buildings onto the Ridge Point Campus and I know we're doing that at some other campuses. So how are we ensuring that we're, and, and I assume some of that, uh, planning comes into play with the, uh, campus administrators and how many lunch periods they have, but I just want to make sure that we're keeping that in mind as we not only add classrooms, but as we're looking at when do we need a new high school, when do we need to rezone, when are we, because I've noticed these new numbers put Ridge Point at a hundred and twenty-seven percent next year, which is really what we all suspected in the community that we were gonna be over a hundred and twenty percent. So with that in mind, how are we looking with our core capacities?
Yes, ma'am. And to answer your question, we, we do meet, before we bring any portable buildings onto a campus, we do meet with the principal. We have discussions as far as their lunch periods and, you know, what their feeling is. Can they, uh, go ahead and, and take on the, the additional? For this, I'm speaking for this particular year and, and the portables that we added, uh, the principal felt confident that the extra space helped him more than it would hinder him during lunch. And for that reason, we went ahead and, and, you know, brought that in. But based on this, uh, audit that we had here and then, uh, what Todd just spoke about on how they're looking at the core spaces, as we move forward, we will continue to look at that and make sure that we take it into consideration. If, if, if there is an expansion required, then we will definitely be looking at that.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we keep that at the forefront, because those are really the, it's the hallways, Clements a few years ago, that's what they talked about, and these common areas like the cafeterias and stuff is where the kid, is where they really feel it. So I just want to make sure that as we're considering our options, that we keep that at the forefront of our minds. So, thank you for that. My last question is, um, on the two thousand seventeen, eighteen campus capacity, what, explain what that number is.
That is the original number that you, you folks were running with as far as your capacities moving into this effort.
Is this the capacity that you guys provided us?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So where did we get those numbers from?
Okay. So these are, these are the numbers that resulted from the change in two thousand thirteen.
Okay.
So those were the numbers that they were charged with to audit against our, our, you know, floor plan.
Okay. So these are the two thousand thirteen numbers?
Well, they're, they're a variation of the thirteen, because there was adjustments from thirteen to, to now, but that's where these numbers actually started, was in two thousand thirteen. That's when that change was made.
Okay. So I'm, I'm not, not fully understanding. So are the numbers in seventeen eighteen, are those numbers the two thousand thirteen numbers or are they adjusted? Were they adjusted numbers?
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna go a little, little before thirteen, just to kind of get, get us there. So, uh, the, the last data that I could find was two thousand eleven. So in, in two thousand eleven, the way that the district was looking at capacity was much like what we're looking at here. There was actually a signed capacity number and that's kind of how, you know, each year it was adjusted, uh, based on function and that's what went forward. In thirteen, there was a, a study that was done and it was changed. And that's when, when the change came up where, uh, you know, we hear and y'all hear about, you know, numbers change and that is, that is true. They did change. Then every subsequent year, the, the, what should have been occurring is that we should have been going out there and actually adjusting the numbers up or down, you know, or whatever. Some of those numbers were adjusted, others were not. And so they, when, when they started looking at these numbers, there was a conglomeration of some seventeen numbers and some that actually went back to thirteen.
Okay.
And so that's where, if you recall, a few meetings ago, when we came and, and we came back and said there was a discrepancy in the number, that was because the number that was being utilized was a, literally a twenty thirteen, fourteen number that had not been adjusted. And, and so then it was, it was adjusted. So that's, their audit, that's what they found in this audit, was it, there were some that were very close, there were others that, um, you know, needed to be...
So not all capacity, uh, so I'm, I, I'm gonna repeat it to you to make sure I understand what you're saying. So not all capacities from two thousand thirteen were updated annually or even updated as of two thousand seventeen?
That is correct.
And so that's where we got some of the discrepancies. But now that you've done this audit, they have all been updated.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tossan. Mrs. Heliger.
Just a point of clarity. Just a point of clarity for me, um, kind of just piggybacking on Ms. Tossan's question. So we're talking about functional capacity, right? Those are the numbers that get adjusted on a yearly basis, right?
Based on use.
Based on use. And so when we, we presented the numbers during this particular, um, planning seizing, we were dealing with numbers that were last, last adjusted seventeen or some, not seventeen, but the year before that, correct? They hadn't been adjusted to, uh, the updated numbers for the past year.
That's correct.
Is that what you're saying? Okay. And so now we have the, uh, updated numbers that we should have been looking at when in, making decisions and those kinds of things.
Based on how the buildings were used last school year, correct?
So, so I, I see that you have the projected enrollment numbers. Should we not be looking at also the projected functional capacity numbers as well, since we're coming into eighteen nineteen? Since we've already got the plan, the kids are about to move in in a couple of days? Should we not be looking at those numbers?
Yes, ma'am. And that, and we will be looking at those, but this particular audit was just based on auditing the numbers so we could go ahead and get our baseline moving forward. Get, get that audited. We, we now have the functional capacity for seventeen eighteen, seventeen eighteen, and now we need to go ahead and do the eighteen nineteen numbers once we, we start the school year for our, our planning going forward.
Okay. I just think, uh, we will get that information, because I think it's kind of a little bit behind now, right? Because we're, I mean, it would have been fine last year spring, but now that we're here in the fall, we're about to start, we've got our enrollment numbers, I think we now need to compare apples to apples. At this point, just based on a timing thing, we're not comparing, I feel like we're comparing apples with oranges versus apples and apples.
Yes, ma'am. And that is, you know, unfortunately, you know, because of this audit happening at this, you know, point in time, that, that is exactly what's happening. But we're, we will be going forward because these are the projected numbers which we would, you know, we, we normally would be utilizing back, uh, you know, four or five months ago. But, but the numbers that we had are the ones that came into question that needed to be audited. We now have that audit and from this point forward, we'll go ahead and start making those corrections.
Okay, so I guess the, I don't know, maybe I'm looking at it wrong. I'm thinking if you've got all these two thousand seventeen eighteen numbers, we should have looked at the two thousand seventeen eighteen enrollment numbers to kind of see where they, 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 they were, they ended up for that year. And then when you're looking, projecting, you're projecting how you were going to use, use the buildings plus the current projected enrollment. Am I not seeing it right? Anybody else?
That is accurate. That's part of our annual enrollment review. And, um, just kind of, I want to restate to make sure I'm understanding. We had the inaccurate capacity numbers, but the enrollment projections are on target. And so, what Oscar and the group have done is placed that in that working spreadsheet, which, um, does some calculations to show the projected utilization based on the updated capacity and the projected enrollment. And so, as the students come in on the, the first week or so of school, we'll be confirming those numbers, the projected enrollment as we do each year at this time.
Okay, thank you. So, at the beginning of the year, we, we check the enrollment and then we update this, our two thousand eighteen nineteen numbers for functional capacity, right?
That is what we will be doing moving forward, yes. Is that correct, Oscar? That the functional capacity will be reviewed each year during that annual enrollment process and updated at that point?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, so, sometime later on, first semester, we're going to get updated two thousand eighteen. But I think the reason why we're doing this is because of the bond, right? And so, I'm interested in to knowing what was the capacity, okay, the campus capacity numbers? Okay, yes, all right.
But if I, if I could just clarify because the, the projected enrollment, it's what, the number that we are utilizing in, in this particular study. So, we, the numbers that you see here, we're, when we're talking seventy percent or eighty percent, are taking into account this projected enrollment number.
So, you can't project your functional capacity based on how we are going to utilize the schools, classrooms? Whether we use a, uh, uh, make one room into two rooms or, we can't, we can't project that?
Well, I'm going to, so, so what we do, you know, you're familiar with the cycle now, the annual enrollment review every January. So, I think if you put this in the context of that annual review, when we're doing that work, we get the pasta data and usually in December. And so, that means in January, when we're reporting to the board, how, and all of this information, we're using the current year. So, in this case, when we were planning for the eighteen nineteen school year, we were using the seventeen eighteen capacities because the principles and the planning has not been done yet to know if we're, if functional capacity would have increased or not until we get to later in the spring. Because that's all part of the planning process. And so, that's a, I mean, that's, you're always projecting that out. You're using the current year data on next year's enrollment. And then that's kind of your base and then you, you use, it rolls year over year. So, in a sense, all this has done is, is proven out the numbers we used in January and, and updated those numbers we used in January to project for eighteen nineteen.
Okay, I'll, I'll table the rest of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Heliger. Mrs. James.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. Okay, so I think there's two different things here. I think there's, I think there's, and I, Addie, I appreciate your line of questioning. There's, there's two things. So, column B was what we used on our headcount report. What we used as our percentages, as our capacity to calculate our percentages. And thanks to Mr. Spoor and his team, we figured out that those numbers aren't accurate. And we have now new numbers in column F that are accurate as of two thousand seventeen eighteen, that school year and that actual use of the building. And I think that's, so that's one, that's the first thing. So, now we're caught up to where, as you said, Addie, where we, where we should have been and Dr. Dupree, where we should have been in January, February this year when we looked at the, at the reports, right? But I think what, what we're struggling with right now is we've made a lot of decisions and made, had a lot of conversations based on capacities of buildings. And we've primarily used percentages because we've been talking about our policy that talks about eighty percent to one hundred and twenty percent. And so, we feel as, if I could speak for the group, a little bit of angst over, well, how good were these conversations if we were talking about percentages and not, and not actual numbers? And so, I think, to me, that's where, I'd like to hear from administration, how we're going to get at a point of comfort that the percentages we talked about, um, are accurate or not accurate and where's the discrepancies?
So, the way I, so we've actually talked about that extensively in the last several days. And the way I would sum that up, and I guess the short answer, is that what we have learned through this study is that we're using, in many cases, TEA or our older ed specs. We know that the new ed specs have an increased square footage per student. That means the utilization, it's going to affect the utilization, to increase utilization. So, to me, the, there's only, I'm trying to think of the right term to use, but the word that comes to mind is upside, that the planning still stands. If anything, we might find we're over utilizing a building when we apply the new ed specs. So, anything that's in, that's in the proposal today, we believe would absolutely be needed and it's possible as we plan for the next three-year cycle after that. That's another benefit of doing two, three years. This will enable us to redo all of these numbers to make sure we got it right as we're planning out further. So, I, it, rather than going the other way where we're under utilizing more buildings, I think it's likely to push us toward over utilizing more buildings or being closer to a hundred or slightly over.
Okay, and I think that's a really good point, Dr. Dupree. Thank you for saying that. I, and I'll just speak on behalf of the Mommy Network. We've sort of known that this, that this situation was happening because of the crowding, crowded hallways and just the crowded lunchrooms and things like that. And so, I'm glad that we're updating this information. But I think then, from what you said, yes, it's a conservative approach. But on the flip side, where are the hotspots that maybe we need to address something sooner than what the board suggested or what the administration originally thought and, and what? Because I know we, there were some timelines and there's some scheduling associated with some of these recommendations. And certainly, in the capital plan, we've seen there's that. So, I, where are the hot, are there hotspots that we need to accelerate the, the work?
So, there's, there's two things I would say that I'm in response to that. One is, yes, we're looking at that as well and actually trying to be proactive in our approach. So, so we will, we'll be sharing that with the board soon. If we think there's any major, if anything's out of kind of a band of reasonable difference delta, we would, we'll bring that to your attention in the very near future. The other thing we haven't gotten into too much that I, that keeps coming to my mind as we've talked is the column C, design capacity. Because we're focusing a lot on functional capacity as we should. But the, the, I guess the aha I had during a lot of this, as I was hearing the results from PPK, is that, you know, our policy talks about programs are portable. And so, with, with design capacity going up, as I understood you, that tells me so many of the hotspots can and maybe will be relieved by moving programs around. Because I think some of the functional capacity hotspots that we see are being driven by programs. And so, that's the piece that we're going to have to study and that the solution may not be more bricks and mortar. It may be moving programs around to solve some of those problems.
Okay, well, that sounds, that sounds good and that aligns with our board policy as well. So, I'm sure that'll be coming to us, um, in the, in the winter. I guess my last thing is kind of a specific thing that Addie was bringing up. And that is, so, for the board, when we, how we use these, these functional capacity numbers is when we look at the headcount reports as the fall, you know, starts up and gets going and we can sort of see how many kids are in each grade level and we can see how a building is being, um, being utilized from, from a functional capacity. So, when would we expect that headcount report to be updated with the updated, um, functional capacities?
When's the first day of school? I mean, we'll be using these numbers, these new capacity numbers when, as you know, annually, we start reporting out. As soon as school begins.
Okay, so we'll be using the two thousand seventeen eighteen capacities, which are, are the functional capacities as we have them. But we'll be, will there, as Ms. Heliger said, will there be a time during the school year where those numbers will be updated? Or you say for the second semester or something like that where we'll be updating that report to be accurate for the eighteen nineteen school year?
I don't, I doubt that we would update that number mid, midstream in the year. Because typically, we would not update that midyear. We would plan starting, when, when we give you those numbers, the January enrollment review, that's the number we use then going forward. What we've done is though, is now we've given, we know we have a reliable number. It may not be updated for eighteen nineteen and how they're using them, but it is a reliable line in the sand that says, we know it's accurate now.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Mr. Rosenthal.
Yeah, I, you know, from some of the comments I just heard, I, I don't really think that it's really correct to say that we're just doing this for the bond. I think we're doing this because we need to know what we got on the ground and we need accurate information. And so, this allows us to look at everything from programming to buildings and, you know, new ed specs and all kinds of stuff. So, you know, I'm, it, it, I, it seems to me like it's, it's, you know, pretty thorough process and, you know, I appreciate the explanation. And I, I think you could probably already see some of the differences if you look at that functional capacity utilization between what we were given previously for some of these schools. So, because I, I don't remember what the fourth settlement number was, but now it looks like it's at ninety-eight percent already. So, I, I don't know if what's changed or what, but if, if that's gone down or up. I don't remember it being that high this year, but maybe it is, so.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenthal. Mrs. Tosan.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. So, I, I, I never, maybe I missed it, but I think the question was asked of when will the functional capacity be updated? Did, I, maybe I missed it. Was there an answer given for that? When will it be updated? I mean, you, you recommended that we update it annually, so when will that happen?
As soon as we get the actual numbers, then we'll go ahead and plug them into the spreadsheet and it'll, it'll update that.
When is that?
Well, let's, let's clarify. So, the functional capacity is updated right now. I mean, the numbers you're seeing.
Correct, but that's for last year, last year's use of the building.
It's based on how the building was used last year.
Correct.
But any, in any given year, that's the number we use to project utilization for the next year.
Correct.
So, by using these numbers, what you're seeing in that last column is our current projected utilization for eighteen nineteen.
When will it be updated?
When we do the annual enrollment review for nineteen twenty.
In January?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, I don't, I never really thought that that was clear. Because I, I think that's what we're asking, is that we understand, we have a baseline. We understand that this is what we're using for planning. I think we just want to know when, when is it going to be updated and when will we get those updated numbers? And you're saying January with the annual enrollment.
When we come to the board in January, we will have looked at how we're using the buildings during the eighteen nineteen school year and revise that number based on that utilization.
Okay. My second question is, you said we have not yet overlaid the new ed specs onto these. So, when will that happen, number one? And number two, why hasn't it already happened? Because we developed those ed specs so that we would have them in place in order to do the bond planning.
Do you, we, we talked about that earlier.
Yes, so the elementary were already updated.
Correct.
And the middle and the high school are, th- those are basically new because of the time. Even though we just are opening Thornton, that's a school that was based on the previous ed spec. So, we're just waiting to get the final information from PPK. And then at that point, we will go ahead and start, you know, looking at all, all this through that lens so that we can make the update.
Final information, meaning the final ed specs?
The final ed spec.
So, I thought we had done that work. Didn't we approve those?
Not, y'all have not approved the final.
Did we not approve them?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, I'm misremembering then because I know we did all the work. So, when do we expect to approve those?
Go back. We're actually, if, again, tell me if I'm right or wrong. I think we have moved away from the board approving them because you've approved the, the standards. So, now we're designing the PPK. And that's, I think, the, the piece we need to make sure we're clear on. PPK has looked at elementary, middle and high to bring consistency to all of them. But they, they've been working on that throughout the spring. And when we get all of those final documents, we will present those to the board in a public meeting. And so, we didn't want to use the new data until we presented them to the board. So, we will do that this fall. And then again, back to the annual enrollment review, that will be incorporated into the annual enrollment review. So, the numbers, when you see them in January, will not simply be eighteen nineteen. You'll see the design and the functional based on the new ed specs.
Okay, so I'm struggling. I'm just going to be quite honest. I'm struggling. So, we did approve standards. Okay, so that's, that's probably what I mean by we approved the ed specs. We approved the standards. So, that was done. I, the other board members can speak, but I think it was our expectation that we were approving those in order to have them be part of the bond work that's being done now so that it would be included in our cost estimates. Because it's a problem if it's not included in our cost estimates. And I can just think from the perspective of a special education parent where we include, included instructional pullout space. And if we're not including that in our cost estimates, then that's going to vary them greatly. So, that disturbs me a little bit. So, I thought that when we approved them, that they were being overlaid. I don't know what the difference is in the standards and the actual ed specs and have, whether or not. I mean, we approved the educational ones. If we've changed our minds and thinks, think that the board doesn't need to approve them now, I might, I probably want to know why not. Um, I might agree with that. I don't know, but I would want to know why not. And if we're changing the elementary ed specs, the board did a lot of work on that. So, I would want to know how and why and, because that was board approved, so I don't think that can happen. I mean, we did approve those, so I don't, I think we need to know what's going on with that. So, I have a whole bunch of questions around that. Did y'all get, I mean, I hope I was, I know that there wasn't one question. There were probably multiples. But I'm, this is the first time I'm hearing this and it bothers me.
There might be a little bit of confusion.
Okay.
The ed specs were included in all of our estimates moving forward for the bond. So, anything and everything that we're presenting to you has taken into account the new ed specs. Pricing, instructional pullout spaces, ed, special ed, collaboration spaces, all of that has been taken into account. So, what's going to happen is in January, when we go and update these numbers, we're going to go ahead and update the program sizes to reflect the new ed specs.
I did not understand that. Sorry. We're going to update the sizes of what?
So, PPK was charged to perform an audit on existing data. And that's exactly what they did now. They took the existing data with the existing program areas that were factored into that spreadsheet to audit. When we come in January, the program areas that were in that old spreadsheet are going to be updated. So, if a classroom in the past was reflected to be seven hundred square feet and our new ed specs now show it at seven hundred and fifty, that seven hundred and fifty will be reflected in the new data come in January.
Okay, so, let me make sure I understand what you're saying. So, you're saying that in the functional capacity, that when they're updated in January, that they are going to reflect the standards or the components of the programming that are in the new ed specs? But currently, they are not because they're based on last year's programming?
That is correct.
Okay. But in the bond planning that you guys have been doing, you have been using the ed specs that we, that we approved, standards, whatever you want to call them. I mean.
That is correct. We've been using for pricing and estimating exercises and for the understanding of what a building needs. It's all been based on the new ed specs.
Okay, and so, what about pricing and, and for existing buildings that we're creating additions for or, or updating the interiors?
It's based on the new ed specs.
Okay. Okay, thank you for clarifying. And I probably want more information on this whole, whether or not we're going to approve ed specs and what's been changed.
I mean, this is several, several months ago, but that was what the board did, if I remembering. And you may remember because you were the policy committee chair at the time. We, the board approved the policy around this that kind of set all the expect, the guidelines and expectations. At the time, we discussed then the understanding that based on that, like we do on some other things, then we designed the ed specs that are aligned with that. And then we present them to the board, not necessarily for action, but for review. And am I remembering that correctly?
Yes, so I agree with that. We did approve the policy to over, to oversee the ed specs. And we incorporated, if you will, the preamble from the previous, uh, from the elementary ed specs into that policy so that it would be, so that it would be reflected. But I think what Mrs. Tosan is getting anxious about is things. For example, we, at that time, also talked about how our secondary ed specs needed to be developed more thoroughly. They needed to be discussed. And my recollection is, is that the, the, once Thornton Middle School was completed, there would be a better grasp of what those secondary ed specs needed to look like and that that would be brought back to the board, sort of as Mrs. Tosan is saying, as in, in the overview concept. Not that we're going to approve, you know, all the fixtures involved and, and all that. But, but to have some overarching input into it, I think was, I think was our understanding. And it seems to reflect what Mrs. Tosan is saying.
And we had work sessions, I think all of us went to some work sessions on developing those. And so I think our expectation was that was going to be brought back to us. I don't remember specifically what we did with the elementary ed specs, because it's been a couple of years now. But, but I would like to, if you guys could refresh my recollection on that. And if we could talk about, because what I don't want, similar to what Ms. James always says, I want some alignment. If we approved the first ones, then I feel like we need to approve the second one set. Or we need to have some kind of consistency in what we're doing.
Right, so we, we had the work sessions and, and PPK facilitated that. And there were some other people involved in that, and I can't remember the different firms. But we, we did that and there was a listing. But it, they were, by the time, there were seven conversations on seven different days in seven different rooms with seven different groups of people, the only overlap was incredibly broad overlap. And I, I remember the public meeting where we discussed these, because we were at one of the others. We were at a school, an offsite meeting. And the sentences are very, were very broad. And so I think what your angst is, well, those sentences, the, the broad sentence, yes, they captured everybody's input, but they weren't really specific enough to have us say, to have us say, this is how we can fulfill the profile of a graduate and make sure that every student has their opportunity. So I think that there's some push and pull and, you know, we don't want to backtrack. So maybe the best path forward, like Mrs. Tosan says, is to sort of get a little bit of a refresher on it or an update. And maybe that can happen in a memo or something where we can, can get some, some clarity around it. Because we want to, you know, we want to make steps forward.
Well, let me be clear. I do think the common understanding we all share is that the ed specs will come back to the board. Whether they are, you take action or not, that's your determination as the board. But it was our intention all along to bring them to you and to present them to you so you can see the alignment, give feedback and feel comfortable and confident that they're meeting your expectations and supporting the district's mission and vision. But whether you determine it, to take action or not, I think is, that would be, that's your decision to make at that time.
Oh, okay, so maybe we need some clarification on where we are. But I also want to pick up on another thing that Mrs. Tosan said, because this might also be niggling in the back of our minds. It's one thing to talk about ed specs for new buildings and place new structures that we're building or new additions that we're making. But when, but when we're talking about, and, and there was some, there was some information about this, but I don't know how the ed specs were factored in. That is, what upgrades are needed in a particular building to bring that building to be able to function how, you know, the new way of doing business in Fort Bend, Iowa State? And I think that's something that Mrs. Tosan might be thinking in the back of her mind. Well, wait a minute, if we weren't including that in the whole conversation as we went along, or were we including it always or sometimes, or I think we've eliminated never?
Well, Carolina can correct me, but it's my understanding it's been included always. And I think a good example of that is, is in the bond, under, under the educational adequacy, on the fine arts additions. The reason those fine arts additions are needed is because the new ed spec shows that this is a square footage needed and we're not up to that standard yet. So that, so that's what she was saying, what Carolina said, is that all of the, all the planning, the spaces, all of the numbers, the costing and everything includes reflection of the new ed specs. So I think, hopefully, that will give you comfort that the bond package is appropriately sized and priced for that. The, the gap that I see, which we've talked about on staff, is that you have not seen the, the updated ed specs yet in their entirety. And so that's the piece that we still need to, to finalize.
Thank you, Mrs. Tosan. Mr. Rice.
Well, I was simply going to say what Dr. Dupree just said, and that was, Ms. Vazetti, is it fair to say, I don't want to repeat everything, but the bond has been planned all along with the ed specs in mind, the capacities and the sizes and so forth. And thus, we can be assured when, at the time when we're called to vote upon this, that all of that information has been vetted. And now PPK has also done the capacity audit. And the educational adequacy piece was part of the assessment that you performed when you also did the life cycle assessment. So you would have to know what the ed specs contained in order to ascertain what deficiencies in the educational adequacy were present at the various campuses, would you not?
That is correct.
And, and thus, you have done that and captured that. And so we can, for this particular bond, move forward with confidence in it. Now, three years from now, the ed specs are going to change. They're, it's a living document. It's going to change. The functional capacity is going to change. And we'll just have to revisit it at that time. That's the challenge that we have with having brand-new schools that reflect our current philosophy and schools that are fifty years old that reflect the fifty-year-old philosophy. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Rosenthal.
So just to tie all this discussion back to the audit, I think this is, this is a good discussion, but the audit has gone back and corrected inaccuracies and at least put everything, made everything consistent. So that when we, things do get updated, everything, everything should get updated the same. So that's, you know, just ties it back to the audit. So glad we did this. I think it was very much needed. And hopefully, this will correct some of the issues that we've had, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation, Mr. Swor. I feel comforted knowing that the planning in regards to the bond going forward is considering the new updated ed specs. Appreciate the presentation. We are now convened in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter five five one, under the following sections. For the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subject matters authorized by law. Consider purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, personal matters, security matters, student discipline matter, or complaint, or section personally identifiable information about public students. We are now convened in closed session.